Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor McLaren, that council resolve itself into the Committee of the Whole closed meeting to consider the following item: litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board, and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, 5157 Queen Street, 18 Queen Street, and 282 Ontario Street.
Please vote? And that carries. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju wajaya kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering, let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting in a Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We discussed one item with respect to 5157 Queen Street, and 18 Queen Street, and 282 Ontario Street. So, I will ask for a motion to waive our procedural rules and have the clerk report, please.
Moved by councillor Shaw, seconded by councillor Turner, that council rise from the Committee of the Whole closed meeting and that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived and that the city clerk report.
Please vote? And that carries.
Moved by councillor Shaw, seconded by councillor Turner, that council direct staff to continue negotiations and report back in closed session on potential terms of settlement for the applications for official plan and zoning bylaw amendments at 5157 Queen Street, and 18 Queen Street, and 282 Ontario Street, as per the proponent's second submission and related peer review, and that council direct staff to provide a public report at the December 5, 2017 council meeting to inform the community of the status of the applications for an amendment to the official plan and zoning bylaw for the lands located at 5157 Queen Street, and 18 Queen Street, and 282 Ontario Street by Homestead Land Holdings Limited.
Please vote? And that carries. Next, we have the approval of the addits. We have a motion of congratulations, a delegation, and a report from Heritage Kingston, and some communications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Neil, seconded by councillor Turner. Please vote? And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Osterhoff?
I just have two disclosures. I Gary Ostrap of the Council of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause seven, report number 116, bylaw to licensed alarm companies and monitoring companies, as I am an owner of a business that works in these two areas. And my second one is, I Gary Ostrap, the Council of City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause four, report 114, as I have a professional relationship with FOTEN.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ossanik?
Thank you, your worship. I Lisa Ossanik of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of motion one, discussing the Minister's expert panel report on public health, in that I am employed by the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, which commissioned the report.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. I Jeff McLaren of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of bylaw number five, in that I am a volunteer at the institute in question.
Thank you. Councillor Cannon?
Thank you, and through you. I Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of today's in-camera meeting, as I am a licensed realtor. Also, I Adam Cannon of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report number 114, clause six, as my wife is an employee at Homebase Housing.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have one delegation. Harsha Vishwanathan, Heart and Stroke Foundation, will appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to bill S228, an Act to amend the Food and Drugs Act prohibiting food and beverage marketing directed at children. And just a note to our delegation that you have five minutes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Harsha, and I'm a policy analyst with the Heart and Stroke Foundation, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity today to talk to you about creating healthy food environments, both in Kingston and in Canada. The first thing I'd like to talk to you about is bill S228 that was introduced in the Senate by Senator Nancy Green-Reyn. This calls for restrictions of unhealthy foods and beverages to children 16 and under. This is important because kids and youth are bombarded with ads for unhealthy foods and beverages daily through multiple channels. We need to protect our children and youth from the harmful effects of food and beverage marketing and support parents as they help kids develop healthy eating habits and preferences. So, we do need your voice to demonstrate wide-ranging support on this issue. Consuming too much sugar is also associated with a range of chronic diseases, including heart disease, stroke, cancer, diabetes, dental caries, and elevated blood cholesterol, as well as obesity. A can of soda is close to the recommended daily maximum threshold of sugar, and sugary drinks are their single largest contributor of sugar in our diets. They are also easy to overconsume, as they don't give any feelings of fullness. Heart and Stroke partnered with the University of Waterloo to examine the health and economic impacts of sugary drinks in Canada. The summary of this is included in the packages that are being circulated. But just to highlight a few numbers, over the next 25 years, sugary drinks in Canada will be responsible for 63,000 deaths and over $50 billion in healthcare costs. Sugary drinks are also consumed in excess in Canada, and sales have risen over the past few years. Between 2004 to 2015, energy drinks, sweetened coffees, flavored waters, all increased by over 500% in sales. And shockingly, our Canadian youth and kids are consuming way too many sugary drinks. The average Canadian youth consumes almost a bathtub of sugary drinks every year. A sugary drink levy would provide many great health benefits and contribute to more healthy and productive years for Canadians. It would also inform Canadians that these products are harmful and have adverse health impacts. Revenues from the levy could also help support and directly benefit communities like Kingston with more funding for active infrastructure and nutrition programs, such as school lunch programs, physical activity programs, and so forth. There is also much movement around the world to reduce and limit the overconsumption of sugary drinks. A number of jurisdictions have implemented sugary drink levies and other sugary drink policies. For example, Hamilton has committed to limiting sugary drink portion sizes and reducing the availability of sugary drinks on city property. We know that chronic disease prevention efforts that are directed at food environments, which are the environments that we work, live, play, and eat in, will have the most impact on behaviour change and health outcomes by nudging consumers to make the healthier choice. A healthy food environment strategy should be multi-pronged, with interventions at every level, recognising that the highest impact happens the higher you go on this ladder. Causes of chronic disease are also multifactorial and complex, hence, the way we address these also have to be comprehensive in its approach. Some jurisdictions have implemented sugary drink policies to reduce the overconsumption of sugary drinks, such as disallowing free refills. And to address the increasing portion sizes, some jurisdictions have tried to address this by standardising the portion size. So, if you look on the figure over here, you can see just how much sugar can be in each of these sugary drink sizes. So, again, as I said, some jurisdictions have tried to limit this by implementing portion size standardisation.
Thirty seconds.
Another policy would be to adopt a healthy by default on kids' meals and food service outlets, which would mandate that restaurants offer water or unsweetened milk as the default beverage instead of sugary drinks for kids' meals. So, what can Kingston do? Well, we ask that you vote in favour of the current motion to endorse restrictions on marketing to children and adopting a sugary drink levy, and we also ask that you consider how to make Kingston healthier by adopting these policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for the presentation. So, the, most of the presentation and the material that we've received relates, seems to imply anyway beverages like iced tea, soft drinks. Though I was at the grocery store with my daughter recently, trying to get her to get a drink, because she'd just been doing exercise and was pushing her towards a smoothie, she just had a similar presentation at her school and said, looked at the label and said, no one has twice as much sugar as what I'm supposed to have in a beverage, so she didn't get it. So, I guess the question is, will the focus be of your work, or should our focus, how do we create the awareness that even what is considered to be relatively healthy, organic-type beverages, the parents might be looking to purchase for their children, not based on advertising, but based on an understanding of good health or nutrients? Will they be included in any sort of, would you like to see that included in any kind of targeted program as well?
Thank you for your question, and that's a great point. Certainly, you know, education is a key component of any multifaceted approach, and we do overconsume sugary drinks here in Canada, and it is a key contributor of sugar in our diet. So, any sort of intervention should involve that multifaceted approach, including education and educational approaches.
Deputy Mayor Neil?
Thank you. Two quick questions. First, what is the overall effect of sugar tax in other jurisdictions, and how effective have marketing, children's marketing restrictions been elsewhere?
Thank you for your question. So, the impact of sugary drink levies around the world has been very positive in general. If we look at the Mexican experience, they implemented a 10% levy on sugary drinks and noticed a 12% decline in the purchases of sugary drink sales within the first year of the implementation. And this has been, this pattern has been seen in Hungary, in Finland, and other jurisdictions around the world that have implemented the sugary drink levy. As for marketing to kids, we have a great example in Quebec. Quebec is the only province in Canada that currently has restrictions on marketing to children, and a study conducted in Quebec found that the Quebec experience, the restriction, was associated with a reduction of 13% in the likelihood to purchase fast foods. Now, Quebec also has the lowest childhood obesity rate in Canada and the highest rate of fruit and vegetable consumption.
Thank you. And my last question, I received a bit of a scold on Facebook about seconding this motion. Perhaps you could address the question that was asked of me. The comment was that, given the price of milk and juice, restricting or raising the price on Coca-Cola would actually be an attack on the poor. Can you comment on that?
Certainly. Thank you for that question. So, sugary drinks encompass juice, sweetened milks, pops and sodas, energy drinks, sports drinks, so on and so forth. And it is possible that, you know, lower-income households could bear a higher price for these, but these are not essential groceries. They're not essential to anyone's diet, they're not a healthy product that people should be consuming, and a sugary drink levy would be health progressive in the sense that these people would have the greatest benefits from not consuming these drinks.
Thank you.
Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. You spoke about Hamilton having done some specific things that the city itself could do, and then your last slide had it, but it went quite too quick. Could you speak on, what are some of the things that municipalities can do within our own jurisdiction, please?
Absolutely. So, a few things that Kingston could consider would be to remove free refills in restaurants and food service outlets. Another thing would be to implement the healthy by default policy, which would be to make water or milk the default beverage for children's meals across restaurants and food service outlets. Another option would be to cap portion sizes of sugary drinks to 16 ounces in food service outlets and restaurants, and this has actually been done in France as well. And the fourth thing would be to remove sugar-loaded beverages in public facilities such as recreation centres, summer camps, hospitals, so on and so forth.
Councillor Strout?
Hi. Maybe you could explain to us and to the people of Kingston if there's any difference between the various types of sugars? So, for example, I know, just as, just for context, in the States, they use a lot of high-fructose corn syrup in a lot of foods, not just drinks, in a lot of things. High-fructose corn syrup, as I understand it, is not permitted in foods in Canada, but other types of sugars are used in sugary drinks, but there's still a difference between glucose and dextrose, and something like fructose and other sugars, more complex sugars. Does this recommendation that you're giving us make any distinction?
So, the recommendation that Heart and Stroke endorses is around free sugars, and so free sugars are not bound to any fruit or vegetable that are found in, the sugars that are found in fruits or vegetables. They're different than the sugars found in these, because they're unbound, which means that they can be metabolised faster, and they don't provide any nutritional benefit, whereas the food, the sugar found in fruit and vegetables are bound to fibre, which means that it slows down the process of how the sugar is metabolised, and doesn't contribute to excess weight gain or other chronic diseases.
I have another question, and just to preface it, when you mentioned soda at the beginning, it made me think of my soda machine at home, which dispenses soda water, and my children all love it, and I was, but it's not, it's sugar-free, obviously, it's just carbonated water. There's, there may be confusion created by using the American word soda when you're talking about pop, but you did say pops and sodas later, so maybe you can say both when you do it, so there's no confusion. My question has to do with the incidence of diabetes. So, I'm a registered nurse, I work in the cardiac unit, and almost half of our cardiac patients have diabetes, and that number has grown over time. Is it, do, how much of that is due to sugary drinks?
So, if I can show you just this slide over here, these are the projections that were conducted in the University of Waterloo study, that over the next 25 years, we can expect a million cases of diabetes to be attributed to sugary drinks.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, moving on, we have a briefing this evening. Jarrett Hunt, CAO, will introduce Tina White, Senior Project Manager of the Ministry of Transportation, Eastern Region, who will provide a briefing on Information Report Number One with respect to the preliminary design and environmental assessment for the Wolf Island ferry dock.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council, and members of the public. I'd like to introduce Tina White. Tina's a senior project manager with the Ministry of Transportation here in the Eastern Region out of the Kingston office, and she has been leading the project, the preliminary design and the environmental assessment for the Wolf Island ferry docks, and is here tonight to update council on that, on that work. Tina?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the time to present this. So, as Gerald said, I'm Tina White, I'm with the Ministry of Transportation, and I'm looking after the preliminary design EA study for the Wolf Island ferry project. So, I'm going to just give you a brief update. I'll talk a little bit about our results, a little bit about our consultation, and our next steps. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of background, it's not part of your slide deck. This study was initiated in 2015, and it was based on the recommendations from a planning study from 2011. That planning study made a recommendation for a dual ferry service for Wolf Island. So, this study is based on that planning recommendation. So, to date, we have done a lot of numerous field investigations. We initiated project website, we have a Twitter account. You'll see, back in June of 2016, we came out publicly and showed a bunch of alternatives. We had a lot of comments on those, mostly based on the size of the alternatives that we were showing and the land use. So, from there, and based on those comments, we did more alternatives, and we came back out in November of 2016, and we showed those smaller alternatives, and basically, those were taking away the parking on the docks. So, both of those public information centres were very well attended, a lot of comments. So, we went away after November, and we did an evaluation of all the alternatives, and we based that on transportation, environmental, and cost factors, and we came up with what we call the technically preferred alternative. So, in August of 2017, we publicly came out and showed that technically preferred alternative at all three dock locations. It was very well attended, and we also showed the evaluation, existing conditions, and a lot of other information. So, in between all these milestones, we had a lot of community input. So, we had numerous municipal advisory committee meetings, community advisory committee meetings. We talked with Frontenac Council, Kingston, CFB Kingston, federal agencies, stakeholders, property owners, and First Nations groups. So, I'll concentrate on the Kingston dock, because that's probably what you're most interested in. Up here, you'll see that that is four alternatives. We had five. The first three that you see up there were the larger dock alternatives. They had both parking and marshalling on the docks. The fourth one took away that parking and just had marshalling. This is the technically preferred alternative, what we call K5. And some of the features of this alternative is you would enter into Queen Street, you would go around to the marshalling for, to catch the ferry. When the ferry came into the dock, you would exit at tragically hipway. There would be a new passenger, two-story passenger building up at the top of the dock where the vessel is coming in. So, this is a computer rendition of what it could look like. So, I'll quickly run through Marysville and Dawson Point. Marysville, we had five alternatives. Those are the first four that had both marshalling and parking. That is the technically preferred alternative. At Marysville, it's smaller, has no parking on it. That's a computer rendition of what Marysville could look like. At Dawson Point, we basically had three alternatives. They all have marshalling and parking. That is the technically preferred alternative. You'll see, there's quite a bit of parking. That's the computer rendition of what it could look like. Impacts. So, at each of the docks, we have fish habitat impacts, we have property impacts at all three docks. We do have to do more archaeological studies. At Dawson Point, we have an American eel, that's a significant, what we call a SARs, a species at risk. In Kingston, we have contamination issues that we need to deal with, and we do have to dredge, mostly at Marysville, a tiny bit at Kingston, and this is due to the new water level changes with the International Joint Commission that just changed the water levels out on the Great Lakes, and this allows flexibility as well for all-year service to Marysville. Most of the comments that we had, both on the Kingston and the island side, was a lack of parking, but that was also mixed with the size of the dock. The other issue that we had was stagnant water sitting around. We addressed that by having a bridged section at each of the dock terminals, so there's some flow around the docks. And there's a little bit of concern with how we're going to deal with waves overtopping at a dock and ice and the safety, that we'll work on as we move forward. So, our next steps, we are going to finish the preliminary design. We have to look for fishery enhancement opportunities. We will be preparing and filing a transportation environmental study report, that's what we call a TESR. Once that environmental clearance is obtained, we will start detailed design. We need to obtain permits and approvals. We hope to issue a tender in late 2018, and that's pending, we have approvals and funding in place. And that's it. If anyone has questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor Strout?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you for the presentation. Thanks for coming to Kingston. So, the Dawson Point, so there's three terminals, you've went, you've just gone through them, two on Wolf Island, one in Kingston. The one in Kingston is used year-round, as it is. The one in Marysville currently only when there's no ice, and when there's ice, the Dawson Point, which is why it's called the Winter Dock on the island. You were talking about significant dredging in the Marysville dock to give the flexibility of it being an all-around terminal, but the intention is still to have a new and improved Dawson Point terminal regardless of what happens in Marysville, correct?
Right. The EA is looking at, they'll have dock improvements at both Dawson Point and Marysville. The operational part is not part of the EA, that's an internal, how they will operate both vessels.
Does the EA look at the advantage to, the environmental advantage to having a year-round access at Marysville for pedestrians, because Dawson Point is not in the village? Does it, does the EA look at that?
That was part of the assessment, but there is an operational side and impact to that, so there is a benefit, but depending on how our operational folks can operate, the operational portion isn't part of the EA, but we do see benefit to be able to have flexibility to go year-round.
Deputy Mayor Neil? Thank you. And...
Thank you, and thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate, and I, along with the mayor, had an opportunity to be at the kickoff, and I appreciate that the new ferry coming in is going to add a great deal of capacity to that. What are the comparative numbers with, once the new ferry, which I understand is built in the Netherlands, is fully operational as a second, with a second ferry? How much increased capacity do you have?
So, we predicted in the future, and we look about 20 to 25 years out, that we may need 158 vehicles per hour in 25 years with a low-growth scenario. And that's how, in the planning study, they came to, we believe we need a 75-car ferry new vessel.
Thank you. And with it, I'm being, I may, this may sound facetious. With it being a Dutch-built ferry, I'm assuming that it will have greater bike capacity than the current ferry. Is that, would that be an accurate assumption?
Yeah, part of the new vessel design, and I'm not the vessel design person, but I do know part of the new vessel design is to accommodate cyclists.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Ostroff.
Did I understand, in your report, that we are going to lose parking at the Kingston side with the?
Yes.
As in, no parking or losing parking?
There will be no parking on the new ferry dock for people to park and ride. They will have to find parking elsewhere within the city of Kingston.
I'm disappointed to hear that.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, are there any petitions to present? Seeing none, we do have one motion of congratulations. Moved by Deputy Mayor O'Neill, seconded by Mayor Patterson. The council of the city of Kingston offered congratulations to writer Diane Schomperlin, this year's recipient of the Matt Cohen Award in celebration of the writing life awarded at the Writers' Trust of Canada Gala. Diane is a former recipient of the Governor General's Award in Literature and a longtime resident of Kingston. So, we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, we have no deferred motions this evening, so we will move to reports. First up is report number 114 from the CIO.
Moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Holland, that report number 114 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So, we will separate clauses four and six for pecuniary interests. Is there any other, are there any other separations that council would ask for? Deputy Mayor O'Neill. Okay, so we will first vote on the balance of the items. Clause one, approval of housekeeping amendments to Bylaw Number 98-8, as amended, being a bylaw to appoint statutory officials of the Corporation of the City of Kingston. Clause two, transmittal of the interim integrity commissioner end-of-term report. Clause three, award of contract firefighting bunker gear. Clause five, Canadian heritage grant agreement through the Canada Arts Presentation Fund grant onstage. And clause seven, delegation of authority to enter into limiting-distance agreements. So, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, next is clause four, award of contract Rideau Heights regeneration phase two. Counsel Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a question for staff. So, the project, the scope of the project, I guess, is really the question, or looking at the part of the work that will be done in this report, I'm not sure where I'm addressing this to, will be to discuss, to produce all the necessary reports, parking, traffic, that kind of thing, with the, and also it involves the orientation of the housing. So, with the transition of the existing fire route into a roadway, will that, will the traffic study be, how will that be incorporated into the traffic study, I guess? Perhaps that's too technical, but I guess I'm just saying, what currently exists is a pathway and not a road. And so, will the, will the studies involved take this into consideration? Or is there like a phasing of this phase of the project that means that what we'll be looking at will be reorienting buildings first and then a road?
Mr. Lademan.
Through you, Your Worship. Definitely as part of the planning process, that will, it will be part of the job of the planning group that's involved, the engineers for the traffic study, to determine when the phasing will occur. There's significant phasing decisions that need to be made, not just the physical aspects of the buildings and the locations of the park, as well as the road, but also the funding of those as well. So, part of the scope of the work is to come up with phasing as to how that would work in regards to the road, headway park, and the physical relocations of any buildings.
So, then, just to be totally clear, so the phasing is the phasing of the reports as well as the phasing of the projects? I mean, I guess they go together, but are you saying that the, like, the first step would be to sort of map out what is going to be developed first, and then which reports would be required to support those developments?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, we expect this work to be comprehensive, to not just look at the planning aspect in isolation from the others. So, we expect that this, basically, it would be, I don't want to say a secondary plan, but similar to a secondary plan where you would have the planning components, the traffic, road system, the pathways, the park, and how it's all going to work together. So, that's going to come as one report, but it will recommend a phasing in of the actual implementation.
Okay. Any other questions? So, we will call the vote then on clause four. And that carries. Clause six, Housing and Homelessness Services System update and recommendations.
Counselor Ostroff, can you sign in, please?
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Clause eight, Innovate Kingston Annual Reporting and Funding Request. Deputy Mayor O'Neill.
Thank you. I had a few questions. One, I get, I see the forecast budget for 2017 and 2018. I didn't see, as we're all used to seeing, what the comparator was for 2016 or even 2015, when they first began. If that's available, I apologize for not having asked that question sooner, but if that information is available, that would be great.
Sayo Hunt.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So, that, the information that's presented in the, in the report is an annual summary of the, of the year-end September 2016. So, in 2015, when the organization got established, and into 2016, they, they did not have what we would consider a formal budget in the same manner as what is being presented for 17 and 18, or for 18 and 19. And as a result of that, the only information we can go on are the actuals from that stub year. So, this really is essentially the first budget that they're creating to, to support the work plan and the vision that they have for the 2018 and 2019 year. So, for that reason, we attach the financial statements to give council some indication, at least, of the types of expenditures that they have.
Thank you. And I believe that's where the information comes forward, that right now, they have $40,000 in what they mention are retained earnings. I would believe that that would be what we would call a surplus in budgeting.
So, again, to clarify that piece, so this, so the report, that particular report ended in September 2016. So, in September 2016, they did have approximately $40,000. Their current year-end financial statements for September 2017 are currently under review at the, with the accounting firm and are not prepared, but at this point in time, we would, we would assume and have been told that that rollover surplus was consumed in the 2017 year. And when they present those statements, we believe they'll be more in a break-even position than at a surplus position. So, essentially, working with the Innovate Kingston Group, we, we asked them to develop a budget based on the future and their experience to date, recognizing that they needed to stabilize and develop some administrative operational support, but that, that any funding that the city would consider would be seen as seed funding in order to help to stabilize them, to the point that they would then develop a sustainable financial model on a go-forward basis.
And a couple of more questions, if I might. We've all received emails from citizens asking the question that I'm about to ask. Is there not some overlap with our Economic Development Group in what they're seeking to accomplish? And what, the question I would ask is, what is the value added by funding them as well as funding our Economic Development Group?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm going to, I'm going to answer that question and maybe expand on it, because I did have an update or a question from another councillor today, and I'm anticipating perhaps that I can answer the full context of the concerns at this time. But, but I would say that if, if there are more questions on this line, I'm happy, we're happy to consider this. So, we need to go back in time to, to the point where council established the Business Accelerator Centre at the former Portsmouth Town Hall. And that centre was contemplated to assist with introducing a focused approach to and targeting the IT sector. And, and as that became obvious that Kingston needed to do, needed to develop a strategy to be able to entice and attract that quality of skill and talent into the marketplace, and knowing that the federal and provincial governments were, were also interested in research and innovation, and working with other partners, including universities and other post-secondary partners, and in support of the workforce development strategies, the idea of the incubator or business accelerator occurred and came to council, which council approved it. IK, IK became the nonprofit body that stepped forward and said, "We can assist in this." So, it became more of a focused approach. With respect to the Economic Development Organisation, as council is where we have established service-level agreements with the Economic Development Organisation, and funding for that organisation, up until the split between the EDO and tourism, about 2.6 million went from the budget to, to the KEDCO. However, now that the organisations are split, only about one point, and I got this information from the treasurer earlier today, so I'm going by memory, about $1.4 million goes to KEDCO for a very broad approach to economic development, of which in the 2017 year, they've been primarily focused on, on, on business attraction and, and helping to facilitate the success of both Fruat and Feihi. And so, because of the narrow focus of, of the technology objectives around this particular business accelerator, at this point in time, there is still appropriate investment required in order to continue to move that forward and leverage that as part of the job growth in our community.
Wouldn't, wouldn't they have, I'm, I'm just curious, if they work collaboratively with our Economic Development Group, wouldn't that increase their capacity and reduce the potential for any kind of duplication of, of, of capacity?
Mr. Dejartin.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you to the councillor, very much so. So, if, economic development is very much a team sport with many players. Players have different roles. As the report suggests, an ecosystem of innovation and economic development can involve the private sector. One of the specific areas where Innovate Kingston provides significant value from their, from their leadership and experience. So, so again, everybody working collaboratively raises the overall impact in the economy.
Thank you. And there were a number of kind of future outlet goals that were established, and I believe this may be in the city report rather than in, in their report. But I'm curious as to, I have such as written next to some of these. Perhaps you could say whether these are things that are ongoing now, or if they're things that we forecast will happen with, with that. Offer the city strategic input for key projects. Does that, has that occurred up till now, or is that forecast to occur in future?
Your Worship, I would suggest that that is, has occurred and is continuing to occur.
Okay.
Specifically, as it relates to workforce development, the IT sector specifically is a very tight labour market. Their expertise and networks have provided significant value in connecting those with the skills to companies that are looking to grow.
Yeah. Create a minimum of 30 jobs in 2018. Is there no forecast for, for 2019 if they're receiving funding at that time? And what are, what would those jobs entail? Do we have any idea, or is that just a kind of forecast?
Through you, Your Worship, I don't have specifics on 2019. I would suggest it would be at the 2018 level or higher. One of the, one of the specific areas that the report indicates of potential for growth is, is the social innovation, social economy in that sector. That's certainly a sector of considerable interest in growth, both at the federal and provincial government levels, and how do we grow that aspect of our economy? So, outcomes related to that have yet to be quantified.
And the final two bullets on that list, expand youth programs through elementary, secondary, post-secondary students, work with St Lawrence College and Queen's University, speaking to students, providing volunteer and paid work opportunities. Has any of that happened to date, or again, is that a hopeful outcome of, of the funding that they're asking for?
Through you, Your Worship, to the councillor, yes, some of that has gone on specifically as it relates to interactions with post-secondary education related to labour force. There has been some considerable work done on entrepreneurship, skill development in the grade school level, very successful programs at Sidnum. So, that has continued, has gone, gone by and will continue to grow.
I'm going to, still not convinced, I'm going to listen to the debate that goes on before I decide how I'm going to vote. I know they have a very ambitious plan. They have, in their major project, Earl They have, in their major project earlier, I think they have very ambitious goals. I'm not sure that they achieved those goals with the almost three-quarters of a million dollars they received from the province and the city previously. So, I'm looking forward to the debate and the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Dejarde today about this and briefly to C.A.O. Hunt. So, thank you. I found that conversation very enlightening. And I just wanted to, for the benefit of council and for the folks watching, just sort of distill it down to one point at this introductory stage. So, if you look at the operating draft budget that councillor Neil just mentioned, it's on page 57 of the package. The two years are identical. The revenue, $165,000, is actually the $65,000 projected from streams that they already have, which is member support and grants, sponsorships and partnerships. And then, the ask is the $100,000 in operating funds from the City of Kingston. So, that's what we're here to decide, whether we offer that. So, if you, then you follow down the line, you'll see where the money goes. $27,000 total in other expenses, and then in the middle, two or possibly three staff members to the total value of $138,000. So essentially, the, this is operating funding. This is an ask for operating funding for staff, to pay staff, and understand from talking to Mr. Dejarde, and that that would be like a project lead or a CEO type, and a marketing and communications expert. There was two jobs mentioned in my conversation. And so, my question is specific. In other instances, because lots of people come to the city for money, in the case of, say, I don't know, the arts sector, we have two streams. We have grant funding and we have operating funding, and there's two different processes. In this particular case, it's definitely operating that is being sought. And I'm wondering why we're considering offering operating funding if the idea is that it becomes sustainable and that it's a short-term funding that is required, just seed funding, sounds to me synonymous with grant, a project grant funding. So, why is it that we're offering sort of ongoing operating funding on a multi-year basis rather than a one-time seed funding, perhaps maybe for one year?
C.A.O.
Through you, Mayor Patterson. So, while it's described that way in the particular report that you're referring to, councillor, that is, in fact, the idea is that it would be seed funding. It's not intended to be permanent funding. And our thought is that it may take two years to get this off the ground to be a sustainable outcome, recognizing that there may be some funding that can be available either through research grants and/or through federal and/or provincial grants, which have yet to be announced. But we felt when putting the report together that the accelerator project, still, business accelerator, still had merit, and that it was something that we saw some success in, in the 25 to 28 jobs that had been created, and that the seed money, which would not be funded as a permanent funding from the municipal budget on an ongoing basis, but from a working fund reserve as one-time elements. Should council decide to shorten that and make it a one-year-by-one-year contribution and come back with a further report, we're happy to consider that for sure. But it was not ever intended in this report or by us in consultation with the IK folks that it would be permanent funding.
Thank you for that response. I think that's reasonable. I think we should be thinking of this on a year-by-year basis. Just to point out that the breakout project was a project, they sought and received project funding from the province. He got half a million dollars from the province for that project. So, they may do that again. And so, this is somewhat of a safety net, maybe become redundant in a year's time or even sooner. So, I think it would be prudent, really, if we just looked at one year at a time. That would be my recommendation. Looking forward to hearing what others have to say in the debate. In general, I would say that as from a value-for-money standpoint, this type of social innovation and growing of networks and using technology is all very interesting, and I think the way the world is going. So, I think it's cutting-edge economic development that we're discussing here. But like many things, there's a lot of risk involved, and the precedent that we might set for granting two years of funding on something that is really just starting out, I think, is imprudent. So, I don't think I can support the recommendation as it stands, but I might be able to support a shorter term. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Senick.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, one question to staff, just for clarification. So, in the agreement we entered in 2015 for the Innovation Kingston, it included free rent for five years, and that was at Portsmouth Town Hall. So, that already was absorbed, right? That's not part of the $100,000 funding request that is being asked for tonight to fund 2018? That is totally separate, the rent, the free rent we already decided to give them?
C.A.O.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct. The operation of the town hall and the major maintenance associated with that is provided as part of the accelerator space. And I believe the lease agreement is for $1 a year, but the city does absorb those costs.
Excellent. I'm glad, definitely glad to hear that. So, there's no question in my mind that innovation is very important, and every city wants to have all their residents and businesses be as innovative as possible. But my concern with this is that this term of council ends in 2018, and this request is asking for funding for 2018 as well as 2019. So, I have an amendment to move, and that is, is that for tonight, we just provide the funding to Innovate Kingston for next year, for 2018? And then, the new council, they'll be on their feet, you know, next December, they can then decide for funding for 2019.
Okay. So, we have a motion to amend. Can I just get that on my screen as well? So, a motion to amend moved by Councillor Senick, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neil, to delete the words "each of the years 2018, 2019" and insert just the year 2018. So, as was explained, just to move to a one-year approval. Councillor Senick, it's your amendment. You have the floor if there's anything else you wish to add. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? To the amendment only, please. Deputy Mayor Neil.
Yes. I strongly support the amendment. I think it reduces potential risk. And I know that around this horseshoe, we have an opportunity to spend a lot of money at various times. $100,000 is the property taxes for about 90 homes in my district, and so the whole municipal taxes. So, I think we should be prudent and shouldn't go beyond this year as far as funding. And we should review how much they were able to achieve with that level of support. I mean, we are giving them, we did leasehold improvements, if I'm not mistaken. We're giving them space for free. I believe utilities are included. So, right now, we've virtually eliminated that portion of their overhead. So, we do support them. I look forward to them coming back next year to whoever the councillors are and being able to suggest that they're deserving of another year's support.
Thank you. Anybody else? To the amendment only. Councillor Stroud.
I'll be brief. What I really like about this amendment, Councillor Senick, is that depending on what you think about this whole thing, the glass is either half-full or half-empty, and this amendment is actually half, right? So, if you don't like the idea, it's reducing the cost by half. If you like the idea, you're achieving half of the commitment. So, that's what I like about the amendment. Great job. I plan to support it.
Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, through you. I think I'm going to support the amendment. This is an organization that's in its infancy, and supporting the amendment doesn't mean that we're not rooting for this organization. I think everybody's rooting for the organization. They're being very optimistic. They're really putting themselves out there. Whether they sink or swim, they've put themselves out there. They're working hard towards making the community a better place. Even though I am going to be supporting the motion, it doesn't mean that those who do support that are not rooting for them wholeheartedly. We all hope that they succeed. But again, it is in its infancy, so maybe baby steps is not a terrible idea, because this type of industry that these organizations are in is changing very, very, very rapidly, and maybe their needs and wants and demands that they have could be changing dramatically, even in a short window like 12 months. They could come forward in 12 months with a different proposal, and hopefully that council has the same intentions as us. But I think that this is an okay motion, because we're not overstepping our boundaries. We're staying within our term of council and keeping things positive as always.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote on the amendment, please. And that carries by a vote of 12 to 1. Councillor Senick, you still have the floor if there's anything else you wish to add. Okay. So, moving on to my speaker's list, the next speaker is Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. So, obviously, I have concerns with the motion and the amendment didn't quite, with the recommendation, the amendment didn't quite address all of the concerns. I guess I'll start with just a couple of questions to, first, either direct it to staff or to his worship. I'm curious, because I didn't see anything in the report regarding the Mayor's Youth Innovation Award, which is something that I know is new and is related to youth, and it seems relevant to some of this as well. I take it there is no relationship between Innovate Kingston and that award?
Are you referring to the Mayor's Innovation Challenge?
Each challenge, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Yes. No, there's no direct relationship? That being said, as we've been talking about projects in their infancy, the Mayor's Innovation Challenge is very much a project in its infancy. So, certainly, the same vision is for that to grow and to draw in other partners as well. So, it doesn't preclude that from occurring in the future.
Okay. And so, then, the next question is for staff, and it has to do with, so in the report, there is emphasis on how this will address some of our strategic priorities, including immigration strategy, youth employment. There isn't anything in the Innovate Kingston correspondence that suggests that there is, that the work with youth is meant to provide opportunities or employment. It mostly suggests engagement with youth, and particularly with school-aged youth. So, I'm just curious, I guess, directing this to staff, why we are sort of conflating the two groups here?
Mr. Dejarde?
Thank you, your worship, through you to the councillor. I would think that Innovate Kingston views the promotion of entrepreneurship as an employment alternative as part of their strategy. This is certainly a strategy that is an option that's been embraced at the post-secondary level as well. So, it's about introducing the notion that you can be your own boss, and then you can develop your ideas into a viable business and career as an alternative.
Okay, thanks. That's sort of what I thought, which is a little bit problematic, considering our focus on youth employment should be to reduce the very high youth unemployment rate that we have, in particular here in Kingston, it's around 20% last time I checked. And so, nothing here really addresses that. And moreover, if we're looking at developing young entrepreneurs, I would suggest that that is in the jurisdiction of the school board and not something that we, as a municipality, need to be supporting. Curriculum development, for example, belongs with the school board. Not that it's not a worthwhile objective, I just don't see our role in that. I guess also, just sort of picking up on some of the other comments about correspondence we've received regarding potential overlap with our economic development people, it seems that if we're trying to sort of create, if part of the rationale, the immigration, I think, piece in all of this relates to attracting talent, particularly entrepreneurs and in the IT sector. And again, while that's a really important objective, I would argue that that is something that KEDCO has in its mandate already. So, also, I think, I think when we're talking about innovation, we should maybe consider what, and this is again, I'm just sort of speaking on behalf of a number of people who have emailed, to say, what would happen, what would this look like if there was something like the Mayor's Youth Innovation Challenge, which involves a competition and involves sort of true entrepreneurialism, where individuals are competing for funding, for grant sources of funding, for example. Just an idea, I think the $200,000, or potentially, or sorry, I guess now, $100,000, could be used to greater effect in that, in a sort of a system designed more to actually capture the spirit of innovation and entrepreneurialism, as opposed to sort of a more in-house operational system that we seem to be looking at here. So, I mean, I do applaud the objectives, I applaud the organization. As many people pointed out, it is a great organization. It's a great nonprofit organization. We have many, many great nonprofit organizations in the City of Kingston who do quite a lot to improve life here, and we can't give money to them all. So, for that reason, I will not be supporting the recommendation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will indeed, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So, I think I would begin by bringing council back to early 2015, when we established our strategic priorities as a council. One of the first things that we decided that we wanted to do, and I believe that there was strong agreement around the table, is to foster innovation and entrepreneurship in our community. And it was very clear at that point that we wanted to take a multifaceted approach, and that was where this whole idea of the Portsmouth Town Hall and creating this incubator, that's where that came from. This is a very different thing than our Economic Development Organization. Our Economic Development Organization is there, and they do great work in business development and many other things. But this is a group of technology entrepreneurs themselves. These people have day jobs, and they are willing, outside of their regular work schedule, to come together and to see what can we do to promote more technology entrepreneurship in the city. I think that that's a great vision, and personally, I think we should have more engagement of our existing entrepreneurs and business people in our community, not less. So, I think that it's very important that we send the message tonight, that this is exactly the sort of partnership that we're looking for, that we want to engage people that are actually involved in the work, and it's a partnership. Now, when I say partnership, I think that means that different people have to bring different things to the table. So, what I like is, when I look at this proposal, the city is providing some money, yes, but they are also on the hook to go and find some funding, find other sources, and bring their own talents and resources and time to the table as well. That's the idea of a partnership. That, I think, is exactly the model that we want. And to be clear, they do have a track record now. They've already, based on the information that we have, created over 25 good-paying, high-tech jobs in the community. So, it's not like this model isn't working. There is a track record there. So, why not continue to invest in it? I'm happy to support the amendment, because I agree, and I think Councillor Cannon said it well, that because it's in infancy, we may yet want to do a few course corrections here. But I really like the comment that was earlier, is that economic development is a team sport. And when we went through the KEDCO review, one of the things that we talked about is that we don't want to outsource economic development entirely to one organization, that there need to be a number of players all working together. And in my view, Innovate Kingston, this group of entrepreneurs that are willing to come to the table, I think they should be encouraged. to the table, I think they should be encouraged. So I would absolutely encourage counsel to support the recommendation. Let's give it a go. Let's see what they can do and then we'll revisit it in a year. Thank you.
Great. And I believe Counselor Cannon wanted to speak to it.
Okay, thank you. Just before Counselor Cannon, next on my list is Counselor Turner.
Thank you and through you, your worship. I just wanted to say that I do support this motion and I think that, that this group has been really agile and they're specifically targeted to the IT section and that they have worked collaboratively with KEDCO. And as my, as I've been on the board with KEDCO, they've done a lot of interesting things and they're, they're a very talented group of individuals and they're very motivated. And I'm very pleased to support this and continue working with them. I'd also like to say that KEDCO has a youth mentorship as well and that's been very successful. And the more we could add to the community, I think the better it is for the future of Kingston. And I highly support innovation and innovators and I think this is a great, great solution. So that's, that's what I'd like to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Cannon.
Thank you and through you. I had mixed emotions about this because I've been researching this space a great deal in, over the last two years. I spoke to two friends that I have in the space. One spoke very highly of it, one spoke very negative about stuff like this. The one who spoke negatively about it said that every municipality in North America is trying to do this innovation thing and become the next Silicon Valley. Every municipality in North America is doing this. And not, and they're trying to find a unicorn company that's going to save the day and change this community and it's, and everyone's just grasping at that to happen. And I think if we approach something like this as if that is going to happen, we're kind of setting ourselves up for failure or we're setting ourselves up to be let down. And I, and, and you know, we talk about these huge ambitious goals. I think it's important for an organization like this to under-promise and over-deliver and know that we're, we're behind them and hoping that it pans out. But I think it's important to know what this is not because every municipality in, in North America is doing this right now. We're not necessarily unique, but what it is, which I found out from communicating with a local employer in this space who probably was responsible for almost all 25 of those, those jobs, they said that there's a lot of issues in Kingston related to employment. So one of them is if you have a spouse in Kingston and they have a job, it's really hard to move to Kingston and find employment for your partner. We're a smaller community, we only have so many jobs to go around. But if we have all of our tech companies in one space and you don't get a job with company A as a programmer, you may be able to get a job with company B. So creating a space to have those organizations under the same roof could be very beneficial. They also stated that there's, there's, there's a lack of coordination between companies. So the, the, it's hard to coordinate ideas and collaborative experiences with companies that are starting. So creating an environment where that is more accessible is beneficial. But I think it's important to know that this, the part that I'm supporting is very small day-to-day business stuff. The other stuff saying, you know, maybe leading people to believe that we may be creating the next Silicon Valley or whatever, it's kind of an unrealistic way to, to look at it. I wish, it would have been very nice if Innovate Kingston had done a briefing or a delegation because there's a lot of questions that I think that a lot of counsel would like to ask. And I do feel like sometimes you feel like you're grilling people when you, you're surrounded by a lot of crown molding and a lot of wood and you're in a circle. It sounds like you're grilling people when, if you were sharing a coffee, it would sound more like a normal conversation. I would like to know, you know, are there time limitations on companies that go into these spaces? So for example, if they're in there for four years, does their subsidy expire? You would think that it would, I'm not sure if it does or not, but there should be like a graduation program for these types of subsidies that people are getting because one of the biggest criticisms in funding businesses like this is that you're delaying companies from going out of business that shouldn't be in business in the first place and the ones that flourish are going to flourish regardless. So there's a couple of questions that I would like to ask their point of view and it would have been wonderful if we had a briefing or delegation where we could, we could ask those questions that they'd probably give wonderful answers to, but it's just a bit discouraging that they're not here. There's compelling arguments on both sides of this as to why you could not support it and there's compelling arguments as to why you could, but I have found I've had more success in my life by saying yes and going for things than, than saying no and, and closing those doors. So I'm going to support this motion.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the clause as amended? Counselor Hutchinson.
I'll just say I agree with considerable amount of what Counselor Cannon said there. I have doubts about Silicon Valley and North myself and besides, it appears to be in Ottawa. But, and with Governor Largess there. The, I just want to ask a question that was provoked by an email and that is this. Do the members of Innovate Kingston get investment opportunities with new ventures by, through their involvement with this, within this organization, Innovate Kingston? I'm just not clear, couldn't really answer that question whether that's part of it. Because I know some of the Angel Networks, which also exists in Kingston, that's the way they operate. So is, is this just sheer philanthropy or is there a business interest there?
Say, Johann.
So with respect to the nonprofit and the budget that's before it, the budget articulates the nature of the expenditures that are to be used for the purposes of administering that organization and, and fostering end marketing, Kingston, the job market, the various opportunities, the facility, incubation, those sorts of things. So from those dollars, it's our understanding that there's no money flows through to grants to any organizations or any organizations that may be owned by members of that particular board. And that's what we're focusing on because that's the, that's the nonprofit box that we're in and that's what we signed up for in terms of administering that particular How, how employment and employees and jobs get created and how the economy moves forward and how sales and marketing happens with individual respective businesses is really the business activity that's generated as a result of the, of this structure that's been put in place. As we come back a year from now or perhaps before that in terms of reporting, we can provide more response to a question like that because I think that that, that's a fair assessment of understanding the nature of the, of the system or, or a structure that's put in place to facilitate this accelerator center.
So what I got from that was maybe. So I have one other question and I'm going to vote for this, but just to be clear, clear to the public, we supply free rent to this organization and I do think they're doing some good things, at least from, based on the evidence we have in front of us and that I'm thankful for that. But how much is the free rent worth on a, on a market basis?
Say, Johann.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could you, could I have the question repeated because I just didn't hear it?
Yes, but the question was, what is the value of the free rent? What would the, what would be the market valuation of the free rent?
And I guess utilities is in there too.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, so I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it would be in the range of 15 to $20 per square foot, which is about 1,200 square feet, I think, is there. So it's probably in the range of 18 to $22,000 per year. And it should be noted that that particular facility was not in use and had not been in use for some time. The city struggled with trying to determine whether or not to actually put that out on the market because of the nature of the facility and some of the realities of renting on the commercial market. And part of the contemplation that was before council when it was endorsed as an incubator was to actually put it to community use in this forum from an accelerator perspective so that we would not be in a position to actually put it on the market. So whether or not market rent is really a comparable or a consideration at this point in time, we'd have to take these comments into consideration.
To me, that's fair enough. It's just, I just think we should know that and should be clear about what we're doing. I was, along with others, pressing for a, in, in an incubator space for this, exactly this sort of business development and saying, because it's the present and the future by the looks of things. And so I'm fine if we're putting some money into it and partnering, as the mayor puts it. But I think we should just, what we're doing is we're keeping an eye on it. We're saying, okay, we'll invest more, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. And I think that's fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Seeing this in front of me here takes me back to kind of when the whole KEDCO review and everything was going on and a conversation I had with a business that's actually in the East End. And shockingly, it's a very technologically oriented business and I'm not sure if anybody knows this around the horseshoe, but there's actually a small business in Kingston that actually designs technology that gets sent into space to do studies and everything. So it's, it was quite enlightening to actually see that. And in speaking with one of the kind of owners and, you know, sort of administrators of that company, he actually brought up Innovate Kingston and how it was sort of organizations like this with entrepreneurs bouncing ideas off each other that can actually allow this to sort of come to fruition. So it was something where hearing somebody actually say, you know, have you heard of them, have you looked at them and, and realizing that other entrepreneurs are talking and this can just be something that can be the catalyst for somebody to take that idea to the next level. So it's $100,000. What's the return on it? We'll find out in a year, but in the grand scheme of things, technology's changing faster than we can keep up with it. So either we adapt and we innovate with it or we get left behind and then we're sitting here going 10 years from now, geez, if only we had a pitch that $100,000 at that time. And at that point, it's going to be too late. You could throw 10 million out at that point and you'd never catch up. So I'm going to support that with that in mind and thinking of that conversation there where that was somebody that's actually building stuff in Kingston, in the East End, that's actually getting launched into space. And it's probably something that most of the city doesn't even know was there. So that's, that's some of the amazing stuff that's going on in our city that starts with ideas like this and seed funding like this. So I'm going to support this happily. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause eight as amended. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 2. Report number 115 from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Osterhoff, seconded by Counselor George, that report number 115 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So clause one is the Capital Project Status Report, third quarter 2017. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Clause two, affordable rental housing capital funding allocations, 28 Cliff Crescent and 35 Lion Street. And that carries. Clause three, Third Crossing Action Plan Update. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Thank you. Just curious, I notice entering into grant funding agreements with Provinces of Ontario and the Government of Canada. Are we any closer to getting that commitment from the Government of Canada?
Mr. Keach.
Through your worship, I would say that we are progressing. There has been a fair amount of work since the announcement of the initial vote, both at the provincial level, trying to get the document sign finalized and at the federal level. Obviously no commitments, but the feedback that we continue to get is, is positive.
And I'm assuming, since there's no number attached to this, that we're doing all of this within our existing budget allocations?
Mr. Keach.
So, so I may not have the question right. So there was a number of $160 million. I mean, obviously everything that we are doing is well within that level. You know, to this point, since the initial announcement, the, the work that has been done has been focused on the grant funding, I would say 90%, doing a little bit of exploratory work on what's involved in design build, but it's mainly just towards the, the grant funding as a focus at this point.
Thank you. And I will say that I will support this, even though I was on the wrong side of an 8-5 vote. I don't want, clearly there was a will of council expressed and so I won't be an obstructionist on this issue. I'll vote for this since we aren't spending money yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. You never know what the question is of your counselor next to you, you know, when you put up your hand to ask a question. But there is confusion in the, with the public. There is a letter in today's WIG standard about what we're doing tonight with the Third Crossing since in June, council did agree to undertake the Third Crossing project upon confirmation of funding from, you know, both levels of government. And we just heard that the funding from the federal government looks good. That's right in our report, it looks good, but it's still not there yet. So I just want to be assured that if we vote on this tonight to, you know, start looking at executing the agreements, get all the legal paperwork ready, that we're not dishonoring what we voted on and agreed to in June, that we would only proceed to, you know, undertake and spend more money if we get the confirmation from the federal government.
Mr. Keach.
So I'll, I'm going to attempt to answer this and Mr. Van Vieren may add to this, to this a bit. So in regards to spending money, we are, we are doing some work on the project. So I mean, when you're working, you are spending some money. We are not looking at entering into any massive contracts or whatnot and that's not what's here and we will not be back before council until we have the funding for that. As I said, we have put a significant, significant amount of effort towards the, getting the grant funding and, you know, this, this is, that has generally been staff time to this point. The other thing, and I mentioned, I'll elaborate a little bit on, we are also, I would say, doing a little bit of education work for staff because this project is a design-build project. The vast majority of the projects that we have done, and I would say probably all the projects from an engineering perspective have been, you know, you do design, issue a tender in RFP and then, and then pick the contractor. So this is a little bit, so there's some education that is going on in that regards. We are looking at getting some assistance to help us in that, so there will be a minimal amount of money that will be spent towards that. So I just, I, I think I need to be very clear. Are we spending some money? Yes. Are we spending like the, the millions of dollars? Absolutely not at, at this point and, and we would not until we got the funding in place.
Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I just wanted to quickly ask a question to ensure that I understand this properly. And essentially what we'd be doing is some of the preparatory work that would need to be happened, or that would need to happen now so that when the federal money actually flows, we're ready to go and we're not getting that money and then spending six months kind of creating a plan and get, entering into agreements, which would then basically push this into, say, 2020 instead of actually being sort of ready for it. Is that, is that a good summary of really what we're doing here?
Mr. Van Vieren.
Through your worship, that, that is correct. So as Mr. Keach has indicated, the work ahead, based on the, the nature of the recommendation that staff has put forward here is, is preparatory work. And so really the thrust behind that would be to, to prepare the request for proposal documents. That is going to be the, the effort that will be in front of us over the course of the next couple of months. An awful lot of that will involve staff time, but it also will require some, some outs- An awful lot of that will involve staff time, but it also will require some, some outside consulting expertise, so that we can assemble that document in an appropriate manner. So that, that's where we stand at this point.
So just a follow-up question. In doing so, we could actually be saving money, though, in the long run. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Again, through you, your worship, two reasons. First is that, yes, by working ahead at this point in time, we can adhere to the schedule that was laid out in the business plan that was approved by council back in June of this year. Adhering to the schedule that was put in the business plan is going to be important so that we can control against construction price inflation that could have a considerable impact on a project of this magnitude. The second compelling reason to move forward at this point in time is that putting a procurement document out into the marketplace in, early in the new year, in the non-field season, if you will, we contend will actually gain a fair bit of attention from the marketplace. And I think that's going to be beneficial for us as we start to consider those design-build teams.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so we will call the vote on clause three. And that carries. Report number 116 from the Administrative Policies Committee.
It is my privilege to provide counsel with report number 116 from the Administrative Policies Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by councillor Camden, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that report number 116 from the Administrative Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are nine clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor Ossanik?
Separate clause nine, please.
Okay, so we will separate clause nine. So we will separate eight and nine. So first, we will vote on the balance of the clauses. Number one, it's tax write-offs pursuant... Oh, yes, and we have to separate seven as well. Thank you. So we will vote on the first six. So clause one is tax write-offs pursuant to the Municipal Act 2001. Clause two is the 2017 external audit plan. Clause three, commercial and industrial vacancy rebate program. Clause four, uncollectible tax write-offs and tax sale provisions under the Municipal Act 2001. Clause five, bi-monthly scheduling of meetings. And clause six, review of building bylaw. And that carries. Clause seven, business licensing bylaw review, alarm installation, and alarm monitoring. And that carries. Clause eight, access without fear policy. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Just very quickly, I want to thank the mayor and council for having passed this unanimously. And I especially want to thank councillor Hurdle and her staff for doing an excellent job of, of consulting thoroughly with the, with the community group that brought this forward. And they're very happy with the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on clause eight. And that carries. Clause nine, intentional release of balloons in Kingston. Councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to explain it a little bit. So this motion is about the ceremonial release of balloons outside in the great outdoors. So it's not inside, it doesn't apply to banquet halls or inside somebody's house. Everyone can still have birthday parties with balloons and weddings and that sort of celebrations. It's only outside. And the ban is about the ceremonial release of balloons, right? It's not about if you're walking through the park and you have a balloon and your, your child who's only four, you know, lets it go up into the sky. It's about like the purpose and intentional release of balloons. And so I just wanted to make that known. And it's, the balloons would be helium-filled, so the ones that will float up in the sky until you can't see them anymore. It wouldn't be about balloons, you know, that you might get at the, you know, at the Fall Fair or the buskers. Then, you know, that wouldn't be a ceremonial release, you know. It would just be like the odd balloon here and there. So it's the ceremonial release. So what happens to a balloon when it does float up into the atmosphere? They burst, and then they fall down as litter. And balloon litter along the shoreline, like Kingston has a lot of shoreline, and it's really evident. And it's a hazard to our fish, to the birds, to all the animals that are along there. If you walk along our shoreline and actually look closely, you see tons of plastic, and some of that plastic are actually balloons. And especially last summer, when we had the floods, so much, you know, garbage washed along the shoreline, just ask our public works staff about that. So a picture is worth a thousand words. So here's a balloon with the string. It was a green balloon, and this was found last summer right in Collins Bay. And this one was a very extravagant balloon, and you see all the ribbon, and it was pink. And here started the streamers, one big mess, and that was found in Reddendale. So it's like very evident in Kingston. So what other cities have this ban of balloons for ceremonial releases? Well, Toronto has it, Hamilton has it, the municipality of Clarendon, it has it. Those all have shorelines, you know, to protect, just like Kingston does. It's also, there's bans in many of the states in the United States, in Australia, in Germany, in Spain, in Brazil. You know, these, these bans for ceremony releases are right across the world at this point in time. So there's many environmentally friendly alternatives when you do want to have a ceremony and release something. You know, you can blow bubbles, right nowadays, they've got really gigantic bubbles you can release, you know, you could light candles and put them, you know, like in the water. You can get flags, you know, or kites to blow them in the wind. And you can always plant a tree, or, you know, put some wildflower seeds. So there's lots of other ways to commemorate someone. Do you really want to commemorate someone by releasing a balloon and then having that fall down into the water and the string wrapping around the neck of the swan and killing it? That would not be a good thing. And you can ask Sandy Pines, they often do see a lot of the garbage entwined around the, you know, wildlife, aquatic wildlife. So that's what this motion is asking staff to do, just to look at which of our bylaws, which of our policies procedures would have to be amended to bring in such a ban to, to Kingston. Please support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Councillor Hutchinson?
I was just wondering how councillor Ossanik was going to get treason to this, but she explained herself very well. I will support this.
Okay. On that note, we will call the vote then on clause nine. That carries. Thank you. Okay, on to report number 117 from the Nominations Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It gives me pleasure to report, or to present report 117 from the Nominations Advisory Committee, duly moved and seconded.
Moved by councillor Beaum, seconded by councillor Osterhoff, that report 117 from the Nominations Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of different appointments. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor Shell?
Thank you. Number seven, please, Taxi Commission.
Number seven, councillor Beaum.
Thank you. Number five, please, your worship.
Number five. Okay, so first, we will vote on the balance, the items. So this is all under public appointments to boards, committee, commissions, forums, and working groups. So number one is the Appeals Committee, that the following appointments be made to the Appeals Committee for a one-year term expiring November 30th, 2018, Nicola Dyke, Alexander Ray, and Hillary Wallace. Number two, that the following appointments be made to the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum for a one-year term expiring November 30th, 2018, Annie Clifford and Ashley Hoosier. Number three, the Economic Development Organisation Board of Directors, that the following appointments be made, Dave Carnegie for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, Bill Durnford for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, Judith Pino for a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2019, John Sheridan for a one-year term expiring December 31st, 2018, Bo Wan Schneider for a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2019, Jillian Waters for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, Trevor Wilson for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020, and Lindsay Wise for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020. Number four, that the following appointments be made to the Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation Board of Directors. Number one, Don Amos for a three-year term expiring November 30th, 2020, Catherine Gibson for a two-year term expiring November 30th, 2019, Robert Godkin for a three-year term expiring November 30th, 2020, Alexander Ortiz-Carlson for a two-year term expiring November 30th, 2019. And number six, that the following appointments be made to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee for a one-year term expiring on November 30th, 2018, Andrew Ashby, Caitlin Bruce, Amy Birch, Taryn Chambers, David Greitmeyer, Donald Mitchell, Alexander Ortiz-Carlson, and Leah Riddell, Emily Sue, Nancy Waters, and Sean Waters. So we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Number five, Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Town Homes Kingston, Board of Directors. Councillor Beaum.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I have a motion to that clause five of report 117, received from the Nominations Advisory Committee, be referred back to the next meeting of the Nominations Advisory Committee for further consideration, and that a representative of Town Homes be requested to appear as a delegation at that meeting. And that's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Stroud.
Okay, thank you. So a motion to defer. Is there any debate with respect to time or place? We'll call the vote, please. Councillor Hutchinson?
Could we have it clarified why we're doing this?
Councillor Beaum?
Yeah, there was essentially some information received after that the person would like to come and actually present to the Nominations Committee, which would, could have any impact on our decision.
So the motion to defer is on the floor. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Okay, number seven, that the following, oh, sorry, Taxi Commission is councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. We actually had a meeting at five tonight, and during the discussion of the Transportation Networking Company's bylaw that we're working on, commonly called the Uber bylaw, it came to light that one of our commissioners didn't reapply, but she meant to. It was a bit of a confusion. And she is the lawyer that's been working on the bylaw. And one of the people in the audience at the commission is a person who we would be putting on the Taxi Commission tonight, because I told him his name was up. So the discussion centered on the fact that Commissioner Wisebaum would like to stay until the Transportation Network Company bylaw is completed, or until June, because that's her, she has to leave in June. And Mr. Carstens, who was there, agreed to wait to come on to the Taxi Commission until Ms. Wisebaum has finished her work, or, or it's June. So I have a motion to defer that is seconded by councillor Beaum, that Karen Wisebaum be appointed to the Taxi Commission until such time as the Uber bylaw is finalized, and that upon the resignation of Karen Wisebaum, Eric Carstens be appointed to the Taxi Commission for the remainder of the term.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend that's been put forward, that it's seconded. Yes, councillor Stroud.
Just a housekeeping thing, it should be moved by councillor Shell. I, I don't mind seconding it, but I didn't, I don't remember moving it.
Apologies, councillor Stroud. It was on my part.
Noted. Thank you. Sharp eyes. Okay, so moved by councillor Shell, seconded by councillor Beaum. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, we will call the vote, please. And that carries. So on the clause as amended, so that the following appointments be made to the Taxi Commission for a one-year term expiring November 30th, 2018, Cheryl Bond, Craig Drager, Rod Moffett, Michael O'Connor, and then Ms. Wisebaum, and then Mr. Carstens after that. So we will call the vote then on the clause as amended. And that carries. Report number 118 from Heritage Kingston.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to rise to present report number 118, moved and seconded from Heritage Kingston. Just point out, the only reason it was on the addits is because of, we changed the schedule of meetings, and we just met last Wednesday, which was within the seven-day period for council agenda.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Shell, that report number 118 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So we have several clauses under both statutory and non-statutory consultation. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. And that carries. Nothing from committee of the whole. We have several information reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, Wolf Island Ferry and Docking Improvements, MTO update. Number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of September 2017. Number three, third quarter operating budget status report for 2017. Number four, official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment applications, former Rideau Marina property 48A Point St. Mark Drive, Homestead Land Holdings Limited. We have no information reports from members of council. On to miscellaneous business. Number one, Mr. Clerk, can I see you for one? Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to work our way through parts one, two, and three, and then we will confirm everything with a motion at the end. So first of all, whereas members of council have indicated their choices to serve on the undernoted committees for the terms shown below, and whereas there are sufficient vacancies to accommodate each councillor, therefore be it resolved that the following members of council be appointed to serve on the undernoted committee board commissions corporations. So first, the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee, councillor Holland, councillor Hutchinson, councillor Neal, councillor Ossanik, councillor Shell, and councillor Stroud. The Arts Advisory Committee, councillor Camden and councillor Neal. Catarequay Region Conservation Authority, councillor George, councillor Osterhoff, councillor Ossanik, councillor Turner. Catarequay Region Conservation Authority Lemoine Point Advisory Committee, councillor Ossanik, councillor Turner. Corridor Revision Drainage Act, councillor Beaum, councillor George, councillor Ossanik. Corridor Revision Municipal Act, councillor Beaum, councillor George, councillor Ossanik. Heritage Kingston, councillor Shell and councillor Stroud. Kingston and Frontenac Housing Corporation, councillor Osterhoff, councillor Shell. Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, councillor Neal. And Taxi Commission, councillor Shell. Whereas there are more applications for members of council than vacancies for the following committees, therefore be it resolved that council select the members of council to be appointed to serve on the following committees, corporations, organizations, or working groups. So for the next portion, I'll first ask if there are any councillors that wish to withdraw their name. Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I'd like to withdraw from awards committee and Tourism Kingston, please.
Okay, from the awards committee and from councillor, or from Tourism Kingston. Okay, from the Awards Committee and from Council, or from Tourism Kingston. Counselor McLaren?
Thank you. I'd like to withdraw from the Appeals Committee.
Counselor McLaren is withdrawn from the Appeals Committee. Deputy Mayor Neal?
Yes, I believe I want to withdraw from the Central Kingston Growth and Infill Strategy Community Working Group with the, a quick question to the clerks. Could you circulate any minutes or agenda to me from that committee so that I may want to attend?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Your Worship. We will work with the staff that are responsible for that working group to ensure that you get the requested material.
And I will withdraw.
Counselor Shell?
Thank you. Mayor Patterson, nominations?
Counselor Osterhoff?
Wheel and deal here. I'm not, I need a little coaching here, but I'll try and see how I do, and I'll look for your assistance as well as my fellow councillors. But I'll withdraw from the Kingston Central Growth and Infill Strategy. With reluctance, I will withdraw from the Economic Development as well.
So I just want to make a point.
Yes?
That nobody's being forced to withdraw from anything. So if, I would say that if you're withdrawing with reluctance, then I would advise you not to withdraw, and then we can move to a vote.
Well, I guess it was in anticipation that I'd have to be on a different one, and I don't want too large boards to be on. So it's premeditated, I guess.
I mean it-
Stop twisting his arm.
Yeah.
So it is your decision, but I think I would stay with my personal advice, that if you are interested in committee, then I would keep your name forward, and we will call the vote, and then see what happens. And I would give that advice to any member of the-
Okay, yeah, I guess so. Okay, I'll think about that one for a second here. The other one I wanted to get off of, bear with me, bear with me. Got to be there, got to be there. I think that was really it.
Okay. Are there any other withdrawals? Counselor Osannick?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll withdraw from the Awards Committee.
Okay, so just a quick note then, that with the withdrawals from the Awards Committee, that we will now have Counselor Bohm and Counselor George. So we will not conduct a vote. That one, Counselor Hutchinson?
I withdraw from the Central Kingston Growth and Infill...dot-dot-dot group. And I'm going to run for the Planning Committee.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one. So you're withdrawing from the Central Kingston Growth and Infill Strategy Community Working Group. So what that means is that now we will appoint Counselor Shell and Counselor Stroud to that working group. And then I would also note that we will also appoint to the nominations advisory committee Counselor Bohm, Counselor Camden, Counselor Holland, Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Neal, and Counselor Osterhoff. Okay, so with that, then we will move to the remaining committees that will require a vote. So for each of them, I will read through, I'll announce the names, and I'll ask the deputy clerk to count the votes, please. So our first committee will be the Appeals Committee. So we have Counselor Holland, Counselor Hutchinson, and Counselor Stroud, and we, everybody has up to two votes. So first, Counselor Holland?
Nine votes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Eight votes.
Counselor Stroud?
Six votes.
So that will appoint Counselor Hutchinson and Counselor Holland.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have the Economic Development Organisation. So we're looking for three councillors, so everyone has up to three votes. And we will have Counselor, we'll do a vote with Counselor Bohm, Counselor George, Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Osterhoff, and Counselor Turner. So first, Counselor Bohm?
Three, four votes. Hold on, I guess we have more. Can I ask you to keep your hands up a little bit longer, councillors, and really raise them high for me?
Okay, first up, Counselor Bohm?
Three votes.
Counselor George? So please, if you're voting, please put your hand so up, so it's obvious.
We have nine votes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Six votes.
Counselor Osterhoff?
We have nine votes.
Counselor Turner?
We have eleven votes. So at this point, Counselor Turner is appointed, and we have Counselor George and Counselor Osterhoff with nine votes, Counselor Bohm with three votes, Counselor Hutchinson with six votes. So Counselor Bohm will drop off the voting for the next round, so that leaves us with Counselor George, Counselor Hutchinson, and Counselor Osterhoff.
So everybody has up to two votes. Counselor George?
Six votes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Eight votes.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Eleven votes. So Counselor Osterhoff is appointed. And Counselor Turner was appointed in the previous round. And so we have one more that leaves, so Counselor George will drop off with six votes, and that leaves Counselor Hutchinson appointed with eight votes.
Okay, so for the Economic Development Organisation, then we will have Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Osterhoff, and Counselor Turner. Sustainable Kingston Corporation, we're looking for one councillor, so everyone has up to one vote. First, Counselor Neal?
Nine votes.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Three votes. Counselor Neal is appointed with nine votes.
Okay, and so now we have Tourism Kingston. We're looking for two councillors, so everybody has up to two votes. And we have four names. First, Counselor Camden.
Sorry, councillors, can I ask you to raise your hands a little higher? We have seven votes.
Counselor Neal?
Four votes.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Six votes.
Counselor Shell?
Ten votes. So in this round, Counselor Shell is acclaimed, or appointed, excuse me, Counselor Neal will drop off, and we have Counselor Camden and Counselor Osterhoff in the next round.
Okay, so everybody has up to one vote. Counselor Camden?
Seven.
Counselor Osterhoff?
Six. So Counselor Camden is appointed, and Counselor Shell is appointed.
Okay. Whereas there are fewer applications for members of council than vacancies for the following committees, therefore be it resolved that council select the members of council to be appointed to serve on the following committees or corporation. First, the Administrative Policies Committee. Currently, we have Counselor Bohm, Counselor Camden, Counselor Holland, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Stroud. Looking for one other volunteer, please. Counselor Shell, thank you very much. Okay, the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee, we're looking for six councillors. Currently, we have Counselor Bohm, Counselor Hutchinson, Counselor Neal, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Shell. I have one more volunteer, please.
Are the meetings on Monday? Is that a Monday meeting?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mayor Patterson. The meetings are on the fourth Thursday of the month, every other month.
I hope my wife is okay with this. I'll long to-
Counselor Stroud, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Planning Committee, we need six councillors. Currently, we have Counselor McLaren, Counselor Neal, Counselor Osterhoff, Counselor Osannick, and Counselor Turner. Counselor Hutchinson? Thank you. The Kingston Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation Town Homes. Looking for two councillors. Currently, we have Counselor Shell, Counselor Holland. Thank you. Sorry, Mr.- You did not have your name forward for that. Oh. You wish to withdraw from planning? Why? There's two, okay. Okay, so which one are you withdrawing from? Planning? Not, not a few have withdrawn. The workload for CECO is, is not what planning is, so. Okay. So Rural Urban Liaison Advisory Committee, looking for two councillors. Currently, we have Counselor Osterhoff. Can I have another volunteer, please? This committee does not meet a whole lot. Counselor Holland?
Just curious, do we have a meeting scheduled for this one at all?
Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can bring to the council's attention that we're reviewing the RULAC as we speak, and we're probably looking at going towards, subject to working with our county partners, that meeting as required. So rather than the four times a year or whatnot, we're looking at an as-required basis.
Okay, thank you. And can I also ask, sorry, just because I didn't get in there earlier, when does Town Homes meet?
Town Homes Kingston? Counselor Shell?
I've forgotten what the day is, but it's between, it's at two o'clock in the afternoon, two to four.
Counselor Holland?
So I'll put my name forward for the Rural Urban Liaison Advisory Committee as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, then I will ask for a motion to confirm all of the committee appointments this evening, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor Camden. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. Number one, moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Counselor George. Whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, has written a thorough position paper on the Minister's expert panel report on public health and does not support the recommendations of the report, and whereas KFLNA Public Health Board and the Ontario Public Health Organisation have both endorsed the AMO response to the Minister's expert panel report, therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston also strongly endorses the AMO position and requests that the Minister review the criticisms of AMO and Alpha and thoroughly addresses them before implementing any recommendations, and that this motion be shared with MPP Sophie Koala, Minister of Health and Long-Term Care Dr. Eric Hoskins, Premier Kathleen Wynne, Opposition Leaders Patrick Brown and Andrea Horath, AMO, Alpha, and KFLNA Public Health, and all Ontario municipalities with populations over forty thousand. Deputy Mayor Neal?
Yes, very quickly, just to give a little bit of background on this. The expert panel was set up by the ministry. There was no consultation with Alpha, with the public health group. There was no outreach to public health. The, and AMO received the information only at the end of the process, when the report came out. There's a couple of very unfortunate things. One of the things, due to a kind of erosion of funding, municipalities are only supposed to be paying twenty-five percent of public health because of a series of many years of freezes that went on. In fact, our public health board is paying about thirty-eight percent, and many other public health boards. So by neglect, it's been a kind of downloading that's taken place, and that isn't addressed in this. There is a governance problem that's being suggested. Right now, we have a very able chair in, in the mayor of Wolf Island, who is our current chair, and Dennis Doyle. And under the recommendations of the Select Committee, it will not be any appointed, municipally-appointed people that can chair it. It will only be allowed to be chaired by the provincial appointees. So again, we're footing an ever-increasing percentage of funding, and we're losing the ability to choose our own chair at, at the public health board. And for those reasons, I'm hoping that this motion can pass unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Holland?
Thank you, Your Worship. And just to add to Counselor Neal's comments, one of the other issues, I guess, that's not really very, unless you've read the report, it's not that clear, but the transit, the transition that's taking place, or the proposed transformation has to do with a greater role for the LIN versus public health boards. And as Counselor Neal has indicated, our current public health board has, is opposing this in part because the model that we have with local representatives involved, heavily involved the way that we are as municipal councillors sitting on this board, is not something that they would recommend going forward. And also, just to point out that when the LINs were created, the idea was that there would be, the mandate was, or the rationale was to provide better sort of regional health responsiveness at a local level. And I would argue that public health is probably the best example that we have of being very responsive at the local level to health issues. So I would certainly hope that we can support this and continue with the structure that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll call the vote on new motion number one. Please vote, or carries, thank you. New motion number two, moved by Counselor McLaren, seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal. Whereas eating habits are largely influenced by the food environment, and whereas pervasive advertising and excess sugar leads to suboptimal health choices and increased long-term health risks, and whereas it is a social responsibility to protect vulnerable populations who are unable to interpret the persuasive intent of advertising, and whereas industry-led voluntary self-regulations have demonstrably not addressed public health concerns, therefore be it resolved that Kingston City Council add its voice to the World Health Organisation, the Senate Standing Committee on Social Affairs, Dieticians of Canada, the Hardened Stroke Foundation, the Canadian- Foundation, the Canadian Diabetes Association and KFLNA Public Health in requesting the adoption of a sugary drink tax and a ban on advertising sugary foods to children, and that Kingston City Council voice its support for Bill S228, an act to amend the Food and Drugs Act prohibiting food and beverage marketing directed at children, and that this request be sent to Justin Trudeau, the Prime Minister of Canada, and the leaders of the opposition parties, to Jeanette Petipa Taylor, Minister of Health, all the opposition critics, Mark Garrettson, our MP, Senator Nancy Green-Reyn, and Art Eggleton, Deputy Chair of the Standing Committee on Social Affairs, Science and Technology. Councillor McLaren, you have the floor.
Thank you. So this originally was brought to my attention through public health and the costs to this community and our community in particular of sugary drinks. And as I was talking to many people and stakeholders in the community and at AMO, I discovered that the, that the Heart and Stroke Foundation also feel the same way, and that's part of the reason they are here. The, part of the information that we were given is that there are bound to be about a million unnecessary deaths over the next 25 years as a result of excess sugar and marketing to children, sugary drinks to children in our society. This is creating diabetes and a whole bunch of other costs to the municipality as well as to our healthcare system, and this is the heart of the issue from an economics perspective. They're called externalities. When the costs that are created by someone are not paid by the person who creates it, they're externalized to the society, there's a certain injustice that goes with that. And to have a better social outcome, you want to have the full cost of something, of a bad, of an extra, of a negative externality paid for by those who create it. That's the essence of it. But there's also a second one, and this comes from a recent book that was published by Richard Thaler called Nudge. He recently just got this year's Nobel Economic Prize for that, and he introduces two concepts. One is called the choice architect. There is no such thing as a neutral choice. The order, the inclination, the, the, everything about our choices can be manipulated in such a way that leads to negative or positive outcomes, not necessarily in our conscious mind. And he calls this libertarian paternalism. The idea of libertarianism is that you're allowed to keep your freedom. So anybody who really does need their sugar fix will be able to have it. They still have that freedom. But if we set the stage in such a way that it allows to have the most positive health outcomes for those who don't really care, we are benefiting our community and can be saving the lives of many. This is not a nanny state that takes away your freedom. This is one that architects your choices in a way that comes out with the best public outcomes. And one of the real concerns for me personally was that in my family, I've decided that we don't need a TV and the advertising from there, but my children are still asking for sugary cereals. Where they got the notion that these things are somehow better is a nudge that they received from an industry. And despite my best interests to try and raise them in a, with a healthy food choices, they still beg and plead for it, and as a parent, it's very difficult sometimes to say no to them. That is part of what the system as it is now is all about. And what this is trying to do is make better outcomes to help parents create or provide better choices for their children in a way that allows them to have their freedom, but also makes it more likely that they will choose the best choice. So for these reasons, I'm hoping that you will support this. And just a little, a bit more on why we're doing all of this is also, there's a bill that's in the first reading in Parliament now. It was started by the, in the Senate by Senator Nancy Green-Reyn, and it went through their Standing Committee on Social Affairs, Science and Technology and got full support from them. In addition to this, the World Health Organisation, all these other things, Heart and Stroke Foundation, Diabetes Association, Dieticians and Public Health are in support of this. Senate bills don't have as great a success as government bills, so I'm hoping that our voice will add to the pressure or the influence or the nudge that might be needed to get this passed and to make our society a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I have a, I have a couple of concerns. The first is a, is a larger overarching one, and that is the fact that we are the city council for Kingston, and there are a whole host of very, very important causes and issues being discussed at the provincial and federal level. My concern is, at what point are we spending more time talking about issues that ultimately are legislated at other levels of government? And how often do we advocate versus focus on the issues that are within our realm of jurisdiction? And I think that that's an important point to make, simply because we have to pick our spots. We have to decide, okay, what is something that a motion from the City Council of Kingston would really, really matter? Where do we do that? Because if we start sending letters on everything, it starts to dilute our voice. So I'm just going to make that comment initially. It's not a comment on whether this is a problem or not, absolutely. I'm completely in support of, of, of the fact that this is a problem, and there is, as Councillor McLaren has said, there is a bill that is before, I believe it's before the House now, Bill S228, that is looking at prohibiting food and beverage marketing directed at children. That's gone through a number of committee work. If we want to support that, okay, I can do that. The concern that I have is the sugary drink tax. That's, quite honestly, in my view, that's half-baked. So yes, it's an issue, but there's all kinds of different ways that we might want to address that. And I think we even heard from the delegation tonight, there's a whole bunch of different remedies, and I haven't heard anything that suggests that we've concluded that that is absolutely the best way to go. So I have a concern with that. I just don't think that that's at that level, that I'm prepared to support. I don't have enough information to say, is this absolutely the, the best route? So I think I'm just going to make this simple. I'm just going to ask that the first resolve clause be separated, because the second one is standalone, that we can support Bill S228, but I'd rather prefer to stay away from whether we're going to pronounce on whether a sugary drink tax is the best way to deal with this issue. So said my piece and look forward to other comments from council. Thank you.
I return the chair and I raise my hand.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal?
Thank you. I will support both of these. I appreciate your concern about how often we're lobbying upper levels of government, but this is a policy that has been adopted by our local health board, public health board, which is a body that we fund a great deal to, and, and we have three members that sit on that board. So for that reason, I, I'm quite comfortable supporting both. I can see the rationale for separating, but I'll be supporting both. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stroud?
In support of active lifestyles, I'm going to stand up. So, so last time, we talked about Narcan and the opioid epidemic. The opioid, again, in, in advocacy, but in that case, we were doing something right here in Kingston to, to address it. The opioid epidemic is, is probably one of the top three health challenges facing us today, and this is the other one of the top three. It's the, the sugar intake by not just children, but, but by everyone. The, the nice thing about this awareness and lobbying is that it's, when you, when you do something to protect children from the advertising that affects their behaviour for their entire life, you're actually heading off diabetes 30 years down the road. Diabetes rates, as you could probably tell from my question to the delegation, is a real concern to people in healthcare profession. I'm not exaggerating when I say half of the patients in the cardiac unit have diabetes. It's shocking when you think that it used to be diabetes was affecting maybe 1 in 50. And, and in the native population, it's even higher than that. And what do the, what does the native population have access to? The cheapest of all foods? Now, I would actually support a ban, an outright ban on sugary drinks. I think that's where we're headed. To me, they're even more harmful than cigarettes, but that's not what's being proposed here today. It's a different approach, a sugary drink tax, so, or a levy. And, and then using that supposed money that you raise to, to use, as was said in the delegation, for awareness and other things. Be, be aware, though, that just like with the cigarette tax, the more you tax something, the less people buy it, and therefore the percentage that you're getting in fundraising is smaller, so that, that part doesn't quite add up. So perhaps it is a little bit half-baked, but in the, in the knowledge that really all this does is raise awareness, I am actually happy to support the entire motion, because I don't even think it goes far enough about the obesity epidemic and the diabetes epidemic. And, and we owe it to our children to do something about this, and although I too share the mayor's concerns about the frequent lobbying, I think in this case, it's, it's very much warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I agree with you in separating these and splitting them, because I won't be supporting the drink tax and ban on advertising sugary foods. I understand the rationale behind this, but we're a city council, we're not a health council. Just listening to the discussion, I thought we should also have a ban on cheap fried food covered in sugar. There's a lot of bans I could think of that are terrible for our health. Choosing sugar, there is a bill coming forward that our government is, is looking at, so good, and, and I'm supportive of that. But really, we're dipping our toes into things that are not our council business. You know, we're having trouble getting our, our committees filled and dealing with something that isn't actually our business, so let's just sort of hold on with, with these types of, of motions. But anyway, as I say, I can certainly support, supporting Bill S228. It's a problem. It's more of a health problem than a City of Kingston problem, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, Councillor Hutchison?
Thank you. One of the reasons I'm thinking of supporting this is because it's supported by public health here in Kingston itself. And there's considerable amount of research out there showing the connection between sugary drinks and obesity. There's big studies been done in the States on this, reported in, I believe it was the New York Times, something like that. And the, and people are thinking, based on that research, that may, that pop may be the number one reason, and the overconsumption of that pop. So there's that. We have the cost care, the costs of healthcare that comes later, which we could do well to avoid, since it tends to crowd out other tax dollars, such as municipal tax dollars. And I would point out about the cigarette tax, it worked. We're down to about 17% now. When I was considerably younger, it was well up around 60% or more, in fact, probably more when I, and so, yes, Bill S228 is, is a good move in preventing food and beverage marketing, but we, we sort of tried that on cigarettes too, but it didn't work so well as in when you put a tax on it and made people pay for it. As for the connection between healthcare costs and the industry that promotes these drinks, and I thought I would refer people to the book Fat, Sugar, Salt, where it's incredible how much manipulation is involved here. So I don't have a problem with supporting either of them. I think when it goes to senior governments, they're going to consider these things, and we just indicate that we're concerned about them. I will agree with the mayor that we should stick maybe closer to local issues that we actually have direct effect on, but this one's in front of us now. Maybe there's another way of affecting that, so it's a bit late, and so I'll vote for it because it's in front of us as much as anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. I actually initially was going to support everything, but I do, I do appreciate the, the separation, so I'm going to support the part that basically supports the bill. And it was actually something Councillor Shell said as well that resonated, which was, we can, we're starting to get into the point of, you know, sugary drink tax. Well, do we have a Twinkie tax? Do we have a Joe Louis tax? Do we have a poutine tax? And it's starting to kind of, you know, rather than just voicing support for it, we're starting to actually kind of make a recommendation and guide the process. So I do want to stay away from that. And my other concern is just sort of the, the constant lobbying of the other levels, and at what point do we become kind of just that annoying voice that nobody listens to? The other concern I have is essentially the fact that I don't recall seeing this come up when any of us really ran municipally, so I really want to start focusing on the things that we've actually have control over. I know we're going to get lobbied about a lot of things at higher levels, but at the same time, a lot of these things that are going forward are not things we all ran on, so we don't really have the mandate, because it wasn't really part of our election platform for quite a few things that we keep sending up to the other level. So I want to be very careful there, lest we use our, overuse our voice and basically people stop listening to us. So this is, as, as Councillor Stroud mentioned, you know, a health epidemic, and I, I do appreciate Councillor McLaren bringing this forward, but we really do need to pick our battles and, and use our voice wisely going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren, you have the last word.
Thank you. So just first to the concerns that this might have been a little half-baked. One of the things that I have heard from a lot of you, actually, is that I write motions that are too long. I think some of you guys have heard that. So this was an attempt to make it a lot shorter, and so I had to take out some of the stuff that these organisations had spoken about, and so I may have made a mistake. I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure how I should proceed on that, long or short. Anyway, this came to me through a constituent, through public health. There are a lot of public health constituents in my district. One of the things that, we are the closest to the people, and in that sense, if it's an issue for them, it's our concern. Nobody has come to me with a Twinkie tax. Don't worry about it. I'm not worried about it. But when somebody does have a concern, I think it's incumbent on us to listen to them. And if we can do something, even if it's, even if they don't listen to us, sometimes they won't. They didn't with Hydro One, but they did on a few other cases. Maybe we nudge them just enough. That's what the science of, the new science of economics and nudging is all about. Will they ever stop listening to us? That's why we have elections. Everybody knows that we are the closest to the people. I think we do carry some weight, and if it's a concern to the people, we should try and listen to them and do what we can. This isn't very much. I'm just asking you to hit the green button, okay? Anyway, thank you.
Okay. So on new motion number two, so first we will call the vote on the first resolve clause and then a separate vote on result, or action clauses two and three. So first on the first resolve clause. So yes, so this is paragraph five. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of seven to six. Now on clauses two and three. Please vote.
One more, please.
And that carries. Okay, on to new motion number three, moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Mayor Patterson. Whereas the Navy Memorial Park on Kingston's waterfront was dedicated in 2003 and established by the Women's Royal Canadian Naval Service, REN, Association by the Women's Royal Canadian Naval Service, REN, Association, with the continuing support of the Kingston's Navy veterans. And whereas Navy Memorial Park is the site of a memorial statue honoring the men and women who served in the Royal Canadian Navy and the Merchant Navy, and annually hosts the Remembrance Day Naval Service. And whereas it is immediately adjoining the Kingston Dry Dock National Historic Site, originally dedicated in 1890 by Prime Minister McDonald. And whereas a group of Navy veterans are currently seeking to have Navy Memorial Park designated as a Canadian War Memorial, therefore be it resolved that the City of Kingston requests that the Government of Canada designate Navy Memorial Park as a Canadian War Memorial, and that staff be requested to work with Kingston's Navy veterans in support of their request to designate this valuable historic site, and that this motion be shared with Minister of Veterans Affairs Seamus O'Regan, Prime Minister Justin Trudeau, the leaders of all federal opposition parties, MP Mark Garrettson and MVP Sophie Kowala. Deputy Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the mayor for seconding the motion and, as always, improving it from what I sent. This came about, came out of a discussion. The mayor and I both attended the Remembrance Day Naval Service, as I do every year. Being a Navy brat, I go to that one at noon on Remembrance Day. And I was speaking then with one of the Kingston Navy veterans, who had some concerns about the park, but also was very strongly in favor of us doing something so that it receives some federal recognition. It was originally, as the motion states, was the Royal Canadian, Women's Royal Canadian Naval Service, RENS, which was the group of women who served during the Second World War and a few years thereafter, before women were allowed to serve in the Navy. And so it was an initiative that they took some years ago. It's a really, I would recommend to anybody to attend the Remembrance Service at that location. It's a very, very powerful remembrance, and this motion, I think, goes a long way to making that a recognized historical site with some federal recognition and protection. So, again, I hope this passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Counselor Bohm.
Thank you. We're shipping through you. Definitely heard a lot of concern about that site lately in the news, and I know Counselor, Deputy Mayor Neal, actually attended a ball that was held at the HMCS Cataract Way, so our local stone frigate, and basically, I think this is something that would be unanimously supported there. So thank you both for bringing this forward, and I'm sure it's a worthwhile endeavor, and I'm sure it'll pass unanimously. Thank you.
Counselor Stroud.
Yeah, this park's in my district. I know it well. The memorial itself, which is in the park, is the centerpiece, and the history is very important. I mention it to my kids. It's important that we remember the sacrifices, you know, as we do every year on Remembrance Day, but the park itself is, it's surprising it's not already considered a Canadian War Memorial. So I commend the mover and the seconder for bringing this forward. I think it's a very strong statement, and I plan to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on new motion number three. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, moving on, are there any notices of motion? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk Oss for minutes, please.
Moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor Holland, that the minutes of City Council meeting number 2017-24, held Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have some tabling documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? So first, Counselor George.
Thank you, Worship. And you can stop me if you feel this isn't proper, but given that we're rolling ourselves into the festive season, I know, I don't know how many of you around the, of my colleagues here are in the horseshoe, make a donation each year, but as we all know, there is the Clothes for Kids campaign that CKWS hosts each and every year, and they are running very short this year of donations, and I'm going to make a $100 donation out of my council honorarium, and I just wanted to challenge each and every one to give consideration to doing that as well, because it means about 26 snowsuits for needy children in our area. And given Environment Canada's prediction that we're going to see a lot of snow this year, I think if there was a year to donate, this is it. So just to give consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Turner.
Thank you. And to you, Mayor, I made a mistake on my voting on number two with the sugary drinks. I meant to vote in the other direction. I don't know what we can do at this point, but...
You can move a motion of reconsideration if you wish.
Can I move a motion to reconsider? I hate to open it up again, but I meant to not vote in the way that I did.
Okay. So there's a motion of reconsideration, moved by Counselor Turner. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Bohm. This requires a simple majority to pass. So this is just to clarify, this is a motion, I think we need to reconsider the whole motion, and then we can, again, take separate votes, but that's the cleanest way to do it. That's fine, we'll still split it, but we need to reconsider the whole motion first. So this is a motion to reconsider new motion number two. And that carries by a vote of 10 to 3. So new motion number two is back on the floor, so now we will revote. So first, we will call the vote on paragraph five, which is the first resolve clause. And that loses by a vote of 6 to 7. Now, on the remaining balance of the paragraphs. And that carries. Is there any other, yeah, that's everything. Is there any other business? Okay, Mr. Clerk Oss for bylaws, please.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw five be given its third reading. One more, please.
And that carries.
Counselor McLaren, you can return, please. Counselor Osterhoff, you're excused for the next three votes. You're excused from the next three bylaw votes. Sign out, please. Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw six be given its first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for giving the purpose, for the purpose of giving bylaw six three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaw six be given its third reading.
That carries.
If you could sign in, please. Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws one through four and seven through 14 be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that clause 11.34 of bylaw number 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw seven three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Counselor Osannick, seconded by Counselor Turner, that bylaws seven through 14 be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Bohm, seconded by Counselor George. And we're adjourned. Thank you very much.